Approve?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, if you can, for a moment of silent reflection. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Appreciate you all coming out tonight. Tonight, we're having a public hearing of the Forsyth County Board of Education. The matter before the board is the decision whether to opt out or not from House Bill 581. My name's Mike Valdez. I'm the chairman of the Forsyth County Board of Education. I'm joined by the rest of the Board of Education, Mr. McCall couldn't be with us today, and our superintendent, Mr. Mitch Young. Just one or two minutes before I get out of the way and allow the, uh, tonight's activities to proceed, um, a bit of history and a bit of where we're at tonight. So the board has a decision before it, but before we, we get to that specific decision, I'd like to just share 30 seconds of history with, with the public, those present and those watching online. February of 2023, um, this Board of Education unanimously elected to self-impose a floating homestead exemption upon itself. As far as I know, the only school system in the state of Georgia to have done that that year. And essentially what that resulted in was a piece of legislation known as House Bill 717, which imposed a 4% cap floating homestead exemption on the Forsyth County Board of Education. Again, this was self-imposed. It was requested voluntarily by this board in response to several years of very rapidly increasing home assessments and, and by extension, tax bills. In addition to that voluntary, uh, self-imposition of a homestead exemption, for the last three years in a row, this board has reduced the millage rate by more than three mills, which is, um, as far as I know, the largest by far tax cut in the state for, for the last three years. So, and on top of that, this board has taken steps to protect and ensure that our senior exemption on property taxes will remain in effect, no matter what comes out of this project, uh, this process. So all of that is to kind of set the stage that tonight or for the next few weeks, this board is considering an opt-in, opt-out. In any event, at the end of this process, a floating homestead will be in place on your property taxes, which has never existed, or, or the school portion of your property taxes, which has never existed in this county. That cap was voluntary and self-imposed, and no matter what, the taxpayer is going to walk out of this process with a, a bill that has very robust protection for the taxpayer, a robust tax savings, and with a very comparable annual tax savings between one bill and the other. There are differences between them. We'll get into that. Um, I'll get out of the way now and allow our CFO, Mr. Larry Hamel, to give us his presentation on HB 581. I don't know if any of the members have something that they would like to add? Mr. Hamel.
Uh, you're gonna, you're gonna man that. I think I'm gonna take us through the slides and then if we have any detailed questions that you wanna, you wanna pause us and, and have Larry go deeper with, uh, we'll do that. So, um, one thing I think we have to recognize, and, and I know this is a double-edged sword, but when you, when you live in Forsyth County, if you've lived here for any time, you, you have seen the, the value of your homes go up, which is, which is a positive. Uh, and when you think about what has been the, the driver of home values going up, obviously this is a very attractive community. We have great hospital facilities. We have great parks and rec. Uh, our sheriff does an incredible job, so we have a safe community, and obviously there's the success of Forsyth County schools in there. And, and we have been on a really good run the last 20 some years, and that attracts more people to our community, which then goes right into supply and demand. Um, and that, and that has driven home prices or home values up. Obviously, these hit a peak, historic highs that we'd never seen in 2022 and 2023. Uh, these were the, this was the average, uh, home value increases. You see over 21% one year, 24%. And those are averages. So there may be some out there that had even higher reassessed values of their homes, some a little bit lower. Um, I will tell you personally, mine was, was above the 24% and, um, you know, so it hits, it hits everybody in the community. Another thing that I just wanna, just point out, I won't go into, into great detail or depth on this, but, but we do have an imbalance in our community between residential and commercial. Uh, it's right around, give or take, 15% of our overall property digest is commercial, which means that our residential taxpayers, uh, they carry the burden. Um, and that's, that's why I think this issue has had such passion for the last several years.
And, and if I can, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Young, but if I can just interject there, because this is, this is an important part of this overall analysis when you're looking at the tax situation in this county. Right now, our commercial tax, the portion of the tax digest that is commercial is only about 15%. That means that 85% of the total taxes paid in this county are paid for by the residential property owner. This is a product of growth and growth policy and zoning policy. We have no jurisdiction over that matter. The Board of Education has no influence over growth or zoning. However, we have to respond to that because we're constitutionally obligated to educate every child that takes residence in this county. So no matter what happens with growth, an issue that we have no control over, we must respond and grow and scale accordingly to adapt to the growth of the county, which has averaged about 1,200 or more new students, additional students per year for about a decade now. So we're adding close to a middle school's worth of kids every year, and that's paid predominantly by the residential taxpayer, which is why when you look at your bill, the lion's share of that is for your Board of Education, and it's a, it's really a, a product of growth.
Yep. Great point. Thank you, Larry. Okay. Current financial staff and Chairman Valdez mentioned this, but we do have a senior exemption. Unlike other communities that have a senior exemption, uh, where that, where it's based on property values, ours is, is a, is a blanket exemption. Once you hit 65, you, you qualify. If you're, if, if you have a homestead exemption, uh, which most of our homeowners do, uh, you hit 65 and, and there's no property taxes coming out for the schools. Uh, so you, you, you gain from the value going up without, without having to pay the, um, the property taxes that, that our younger families do. Our current, uh, maintenance and operation millage rate of 15.208, um, our current debt millage rate at 1.418. As, as Chairman Valdez pointed out, the last three years straight, we've had millage rate cuts in excess of three mills, which is unheard of throughout the state of Georgia. Um, our, our MNO millage rate is the lowest it's been since 2009. FCS Forsyth County Schools has been recognized statewide and nationally as an excellent steward of resources. We've had a five-star financial efficiency rating from our, all the state metrics, as well as a triple-A bond rating, one of only six school districts in the country, uh, to, to get that. So in the 2024 election that, that just passed, this past November, as, as Chairman Valdez pointed out, House Bill 717 was on the ballot, as was House Bill 581. 717 was the locally devised one or designed one, and, and that caps reassessment values at 4% annually. So let me talk a little bit about House Bill 717, and just a little bit about how that was put together, and then we'll, then we'll move over to House Bill 581. But as Chairman Valdez shared with you, it was, it was put together, as, as we saw two years of those incredibly high values, our Board of Education very responsibly got together with our local legislative delegation. It's not something we can do without them. It has to go to a referendum, which means it has to come out of the General Assembly. Each member of our Forsyth County State Legislative Delegation, that's our local state senators and, uh, state representatives, got together with our Board of Education. They poured over all of our, our budgets and our financial planning and projections, sat with Larry, sat with our facilities projector, and came up with a, with a, a cap that, that really restrains our spending, all right? And, and of course, on, if you're just looking at the school side of it, we would say, ooh, that, that's really cutting it to the bone. Um, but certainly on the taxpayer side, you look at it, and that, that is significant relief from seeing those 24, 23, 25% increases each year. So that floating homestead was put together with a fixed cap, and the reason a fixed cap is so important is that allows us to do long-term planning and basically to know how to budget from year to year, uh, with, and we'll get into that a little bit more in just a bit. Our, uh, House Bill 717 that was passed, which by the way, is in effect, so there's no debate on it. This, this one's in effect. Uh, that expires in 2035. We feel like that was a responsible approach to take because that gives us time to analyze the impact, uh, of that, of that on our, on our year-to-year budgets, our long-term planning, and what we're able to provide our, our children in, in terms of their education. It can be adjusted at the end of 2035, or it could just flat out be extended. And, um, but it, but it does have that sunset on there, so there's time for analysis. It applies specifically to Forsyth County schools, based on our local economic realities that were, that were analyzed to put this together. It was passed by the General Assembly and is approved by almost 74% of Forsyth County voters in this past election, and as I said, it is now in effect. Apparently, when we, uh, our delegation passed that in the General Assembly, I believe in 2023, it sparked a lot of conversation across the state. It wasn't just Forsyth County that saw increases, but, but the state of Georgia is doing really good, uh, in, in a lot of business. I mean, it's the best state to do business in for, I think, the 11th straight year now. But looking at increased home values throughout the state, the entire legislation, or legislature, the General Assembly felt that it would be appropriate to develop their own cap modeled after Forsyth County schools. I mean, ours was in there, they sort of reacted to ours, um, and developed a, a statewide cap that would require communities, uh, to, to follow the same cap that, that, you know, throughout the state. And I'll talk a little bit about that specifically in just a minute when we get into 581. But I think what's really important to understand, why it was so important for us to put our own together and look at our own economic realities, is we provide some things in this school system that other systems just don't. And I'm not gonna read all these to you, all right? But you've got the, the blanket homestead exemption we've talked about and the cap. Unlike schools throughout the, throughout the United States and certainly throughout Georgia, every one of our schools has a school resource officer. Uh, and certainly in the times we live, I don't think there's any more important, uh, more important partnership to have than what we have with our sheriff's department. The student advocacy specialist, we go above and beyond in terms of, of counselors. We've got a lot of staff that are not paid out of state and federal revenues or budgets, but, but here locally. We have been able to offer, God forbid we ever have a pandemic, but one of the things that really set Forsyth County schools apart was we had the ability to provide online learning, in-person learning, or a hybrid to whatever was needed to meet family needs at that time. Um, you, those things take money and to be able to have the staff and the technology to do those things. So that was important as we, as we tried to figure out what an appropriate cap would be. Um, and then you can see the rest of them there. Okay. Moving to the, the bill that we inspired, House Bill 581. It too is a floating homestead exemption. The difference is, rather than having a fixed cap, the cap that the state has determined is tied to inflation. Now, we don't know exactly what they're going to use for that, which is a little part of our apprehension, but it'll be determined each year by the Georgia Department of Revenue and the, and the Revenue Commissioner. And this cap is not just for school systems, but it's a cap that applies to counties, consolidated governments, municipalities, as well as local school districts. There is no expiration date to House Bill 581. Once it takes effect, and by the way, it has taken effect because our voters voted on that by a margin of about 69%, um, so that is in effect, but it has no expiration date. What they put into the legislation, knowing that there were systems out there that had already acted responsibly, as we have a history of doing, is they put out a one-time opt-out opportunity and an opt-out process that must be completed between January 1, January 1 and March 1st. And this is what we're all here for tonight. This is, this is part of the process. This is the first hearing. It was passed by the General Assembly, 2024 election, confirmed it statewide referendum, um, and it is in effect right now. And this is, my, my recommendation, obviously, we wouldn't be going through this, our recommendation, uh, as a district staff to the board is to, is to opt out, which is, which is why we're going through this process. Uh, here's a list of our concerns with House Bill 581. It's, it's tied to the Consumer Price Index, we think. Now, the Consumer Price Index, um, fluctuates drastically from year to year. It's not 100% clear that, because there's different CPIs that can be used, it could be a statewide, it could be a national one. Even if it's a statewide, my concern and our concern as a district staff, as a statewide, is the economy of Forsyth County is not the same economy of, of Lowndes County, Georgia. It's not the same economy of Thomaston, Georgia. So to have a one-size-fits-all, uh, you know, is, is certainly an efficient means, but not necessarily perhaps the most effective. House Bill 581 creates uncertainty in the budget process. So when it's fluctuating, and you'll see the numbers in just a minute, at least over the past seven years, how it's fluctuated, it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult for long-term planning for our school system. The challenge is on our tax assessor, I can't even imagine having to deal with all the, the variety of things, but, but certainly that could delay tax collections and our ability to be able to, to make payroll as the school year goes on without other taking out loans or, or stealing from our fund, our, our fund balance. There is no expiration date. I've talked about that, so there's no mechanism along the way to make adjustments if it, if it's really hurting us. Uh, and, and as I said, there's a one-time opt-out opportunity, um, that we're, that we're forced to kind of put together right out of the gate in January 1 and, and where we are right now. So when you look at the numbers, the, the columns that are highlighted in red, uh, the first column shows for the last seven years, had we used the CPI, which would be the statewide cap, had we used that, look at the fluctuations that you have in there. In 2018, the, the Consumer Price Index was 2.1, then 2.4, then it drops to 1.8 and drops again to 1.2, then it spikes to 4.7, then to 8, then to 4.1. And, and again, what we're, what we're asking folks to consider is, is imagine trying to do your family budget from year to year when you're not sure how much, how much you're gonna be affected from year to year. At least with the cap, which is the next column, that is a 4% fixed cap, there, there are years where that would have been really tough on us to have, but we would have known going into that and would have been able to make adjustments, uh, at, in, in the budgeting process going forward. So just, just want to draw your attention to that. The other thing I think that's really interesting about this is when you look at the cumulative effect over those seven years, the reality is, when you look at, if you look at where it says HB 581 cumulative difference by year, when you total up, how much would have gone back potentially to, or, or savings to our homeowners? House Bill 581 over those seven years would have saved a, a collective amount of 75 million. The 4% cap, if you go two columns over to the cumulative effect, uh, of 717, is actually 76.4 million. So as crazy as it is, the fixed cap over the course of time actually returned 1.2 million, would have returned 1.2 million more dollars back to the taxpayer. The benefit for us, however, is that it would be stable and would be, would be easy to predict from year to year. Just some comparisons between the two, and we've got on our website a nice side-by-side chart that you can look at. A concern that I have, just philosophically, that I think in a conservative community that, that it is shared, um, is that the General Assembly took a one-size-fits-all statewide solution to individual local challenges. House Bill 717, we came out of the gate ahead of that in trying to provide tax relief to our taxpayers, but with a, a very local approach, with a collaboration between our school system and our legislative delegation for a local solution. House Bill 581 tied to inflation, very volatile. I've talked about the, the challenges that will be with the, with the budgeting. 717, uh, while not perfect, it does allow for some predictability from year to year. House Bill 581 was designed to blunt the rise of property tax reassessment values as its sole purpose. And, and I really wanna hit this one hard, is that obviously the, the legislature with great intentions wanted to provide tax relief to all of us, which is great, but that was their sole purpose of that legislation. The purpose of our legislation was not singular, but it was, it, it was a dual purpose. And that dual purpose was to provide tax relief, but also to do it in a way that ensures that the educational services and the safety needs of Forsyth students and schools can continue to be met. That was not a part of the factoring that goes into a statewide one that is just for communities, for municipalities, for, for counties and school systems. Ours was designed specifically for our school system in this community because we know our community, whether you have children or not, has absolute expectations of our school system, and we need to be able to meet those. And then I mentioned the, the savings in, in, in that last bullet point there. Okay, Larry? Again, it was a collaboration. Some would, I would say it's the model for how you collaborate between your, your local government and your state government. We reviewed local Forsyth County economic trends, we reviewed the local school budget history and financial planning. I can remember in that conference room in there that we had, you know, at many times we'd have two and three, uh, state representatives and a board member sitting with Larry and our superintendent and, and my role at the time, and we were pouring over those documents and, and really getting into the weeds with all that. So it was really designed with, with our specifics in mind. Um, pardon me. Again, we've got local expectations for our educational needs, programs, staffing, and effectiveness that have to be considered, and, um, we feel that, that by developing this locally, what was designed is the best way to protect both property owners and still provide those educational needs. Our, our staff hears this all the time. I'm sure my friends on the board get tired of hearing this, but what, what I feel makes our Forsyth County schools such a unique and successful organization is that over the last 20 years, we have a history of collaboration, innovation, and accountability. This was a model for that, putting House Bill 717. It, it was a collaboration between our leaders to innovate something, to make sure that we're protecting our taxpayers, and it's a way to, to restrain our budgets to make sure that we're, we're held accountable as, as school district leaders. Again, I'm not gonna read through this, but this, these are just the requirements that, that I wanna make sure that we have posted out there, but, uh, this is the first of three hearings. A final decision will be made on that after we hear feedback from you. Certainly, I'm not making that decision. I, you've heard my recommendation that I've made to the board, but ultimately, the, the five elected officials will decide on this, and, uh, they're gonna do that after they've done their research, which they've been doing, they wanna hear back from the public, and on February 18th, a final decision will be made. All right? And then there again, just a timeline. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Chairman Valdez.
All right. So before we get into the public hearing portion of, of the evening, I'd like to open the floor to the members in case anyone has anything they'd like to add.
I think the only thing I'll add is, you know, I think Larry putting the, some of the information on yours was good. Uh, and I think one thing that stood out to me was, when you look at, compare the two bills side by side, you know, and when actual Forsyth County voters, more people actually voted for the local, um, you know, our local version of the homestead exemption than the statewide one, um, by, I think, about 4%, close to 5%.
Right.
So I, I just wanna, I think that's important to keep in mind for us as well.
So before I open up the, uh, public hearing portion of the evening, just, just a couple of points that, that I'd like to leave you guys with, a little bit of context on the process. So as a board, we're here to listen to the recommendations of staff, but we're also here to listen to the opinions of the public. That's the purpose, the purpose of this process. No decision is made. I ask you to consider and to keep in mind that when this bill passed in last year's legislative session, that's HB 581, we had already for several years been working on a local version of a homestead exemption, and we were ahead of that. So we didn't require the state to impose it upon us. We took it upon ourselves as a community to do the right thing and impose it upon ourselves. I urge you to remember that no matter what, at the end of this process, there will be a floating homestead exemption on your school taxes. That has never existed. Both options are very similar in terms of the annual tax savings to the individual. They're very similar. We're talking about single-digit of percents, 1, 1 and 1/2% difference. Very different, very similar tax saving measures. I would ask that you think of this as a great problem to have. We're in a community that did the right thing and now has two very robust tax saving measures to essentially pick from. And I would also ask you to consider that the Board of Education and the, the kind of challenge with the statewide one-size-fits-all measures is that all school systems are fundamentally very different from municipal or county governments. If 10,000 people move into the county, that will place limited strain on the services that the county provides. If 10,000 students are added to our school system, we'll probably have to build a few new schools to the tune of a couple hundred million dollars. So growth costs us disproportionately when compared to city and county governments. So a one-size-fits-all is a little bit difficult for us to adapt to. Your board wants to do the right thing for the taxpayer, wants to provide robust protections to taxpayers, but we also want to protect and have a duty to protect what is essentially the crown jewel of property values in Forsyth County, which is your school system. And let's face it, most people move here because of your school system, and we have a duty to protect that and to protect the taxpayer. And we're trying to find that balance. So we want to hear from you. We have a list of folks that signed up. At the discretion of the chair, anyone who's present tonight and wants to speak will be allowed to speak, whether or not you, you signed up or not. I'm gonna read through this list of folks. If you do not wish to speak, just let me know. When you come up, you'll be granted three minutes. Listen, if it takes a little longer, that's fine, we'll, we'll give you some more time. You have a super annoying buzzer in front of you right there. When the light is green, that means your time has started. When it starts to blink yellow, that means you've got about 30 seconds left in your three minutes, and when it starts to scream at you, that means you're out of time. Uh, again, well, there's only a handful of us here, we'll let you keep going if you need to. You can just about say whatever the heck you want, we're just asking to have mercy on us. So, um, we'll, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. The first person on the list is Mr. Eric Edstrom. Welcome, Mr. Edstrom.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Appreciate you putting together the meetings, even though they, they are determined as part of each bill and a requirement of each bill, uh, HB 581 in order to complete the process and find, make a final decision. That being said, just a couple of observation, the CPI index, I just did it. By the way, I'm a finance guy, so, um, I do a lot of economic research for a living. It historically has been around 2%. Actually, it's been slightly about 2.3, 2.4% going back to 1913, in case you weren't interested in that. It's also released on a monthly basis, um, so therefore with objection to, um, I forget the gentleman's name, Mr. Young, I believe. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Young's comment that it's, you know, a relative, uh, steady understanding of where your tax increase may come from is, is not necessarily unapparent to you if you're following the CPI on the monthly basis and also the Federal Reserve comments on it, also on monthly basis. Similarly, so does the state in terms of, um, the secretary, the, um, treasurer's office for the state of Georgia. So that's there. With respect to the differential between the vote of, uh, 717 and 581 respectively being 4% difference in terms of the vote, I would argue the difference really is, is not that Forsyth was better, it was more known in terms of what the cap was. So definitionally, I think that would have altered the, the 4% shift in addition to the delta with respect to, it was more localized, probably got better attention as a consequence, as opposed to being a state bill, um, and, and, and voting opportunity. So, um, I, I think ambiguity speaks to the delta on the 4%. So with that being said, just a couple of comments that I would like to add beyond that is, I moved from Southern County, um, known as Fulton County, um, in order to avoid exactly this problem and taxes on a routine basis going up. And I did, I was looking for it, but did not have time to isolate. I think it was mentioned over here by Mr. Grimes, I'm, maybe I'm incorrect about that. I apologize. But it sounded as if there was a 3% reduction in the millage rate, and did that, the question is, does that go back to 2021 or 2022 forward?
So in, um, in 2022, it was reduced one mil.
Correct.
In 2023, it was reduced two mills.
Okay.
And last year, it was reduced a fraction of a mil. It's okay, you can keep going. A fraction of a mil. So it's over three mills over three years, which is, which is much more than 3%.
Okay.
Three mils, not percent, you want?
Correct. Yeah, three mils. Okay. All right. Cause I was able to establish the 2% in 2023 to 2022, obviously as a consequence of COVID and the MNO budget for the school district being reduced because obviously there's less wear and tear in the building during that timeframe. I suppose it's one of the reasons. In addition, there was just a large, um... a large concern across the state, as you pointed out well, of just a challenge of increased property taxes. That being said, I'll just kind of go through it. I really think there's a combination of issues here. One is, is that we really got to get the county property assessor under control. Okay? That's number one. That falls outside of this venue, although it influences this venue at the same time. Right? Because they go, they work in concert at different rates to one another, regardless of the cap, 1717, or potentially a reduced cap at 581, assuming it's a CPI index. So we just need to, that'll take up on a different stage, if you will, or process. Because my taxes went up last year, 24.5%. The prior year, actually, I saw a net benefit of about 7% because the assessor had the taxable assessed value at a lower rate by virtue of the COVID prior year. But that being said, those are issues we'll take up elsewhere. So I'm not convinced, and I'll probably come back to the other couple of meetings and make some comments there as well, now that I have a better understanding of some of the applications of 581 that you would like to apply. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Edstrom. Even though it says not speaking, just to be sure, Louisa and David Holcomb, no speaking. I don't blame you. Donald West.
He did a great job in putting up information. My comment is, this simply is just unsustainable from a standpoint of 24% a year. You look at it, that's 100% increase every four years. And looking at that, again, he did a great job for us, analysis. And I came here just to learn more about it. But just from a standpoint of basic math, 7,000 to 14,000 to 28,000 over the course of 15 years or thereabouts, and it's like, no one, well, a few people can pay it, not the masses of people. But, you know, something like, have y'all considered having representatives, you know, like Doge, for heaven's sake, you know? We can't get our own Elon Musk.
We can't afford him. Taxes will blow up.
I can make a call. But you look at it, and it's like, you know, they're going to do an interesting job in rearranging stuff. But just looking, I'm a 30-plus-year resident. Both my kids went to school here. Excellent. Both succeeded wildly beyond my expectations in college. So it's a great program. But part of it is becoming affordability, not just for the rich people or for the well-to-do, but even the people that buy their first home. You know, the costs are going up so fast that every year, if you don't pay cash for your house, it's added to your payment, your monthly payment, $200 a month, $400 a month. And when you do that, if you're making $60,000 a year with a $350,000 mortgage, it's tough. I mean, do I get bread or I pay my tax? So in looking at that, my first tax bill here back in 1991, I think it was $700. I'm like, I've hit the lottery. This is just fantastic. Because I looked across the line at North Forsyth, I mean, North Fulton, excuse me, and it was $4,000, $5,000, $6,000, $7,000. I'm like, wow, did that make a great choice? And we've been here ever since. But in looking at it, what is y'all's plan to try to maintain this? And I've looked at this and I've learned a lot. And it's interesting information. I'll have to read more about it. But what is your plan if, after four years, this keeps happening? The valuation part of it, I've spoken with them every year that it's come up, it locked the rate. But that's not the answer. They can't do all that. We've got to figure out what is a good balance. I did speak with a gentleman from Rome for the 581 aid this morning. He said, we're reintroducing a new bill that opts out the opt-out. And that being said, because it was done as a compromise for the lobby, for the other program that did not want 581 in place at all. So he said, that's going to be coming up. And I'm like, well, call me, you know, if there's anything that, information-wise. And that's why I'm here tonight. You know, I hadn't been in the school board in years. I don't think I've ever spoken before for the school board. But looking at this, both sides need, you need the funding, but also the community needs the money in their pocket to buy basics. And that's all I've got to say. And I may come back in a couple of weeks or whatever just to check things out. But my last question would be, what components will determine if y'all go with or without opt-out? Will it just be a down-the-line vote? Is that how it will go?
Yeah. So the ultimate decision is a majority of the board. So three members will decide one way or the other. I think that we're all open-minded and listening. In terms of the first question of what's the long-term plan, the unsustainability of these tax increases? So this is not about me, but I'll just, 30 seconds to give you my history. In February of 2022, I announced my candidacy for the Board of Education. I've been on this board two years, they've been on this board two months. But everybody on this board ran with the commitment to deal with the problem of runaway taxes in this county. My individual tax bill is up about 70% over five or six years. I am not a millionaire, so I'm feeling it. So the comparison of taxes or bread, I feel that one. What's the plan? This is the plan. House Bill 717 was the plan. It was something that we were told that was impossible in this county, but we managed to get it done. It would not have gotten done without this board soliciting it. That puts that fixed cap on our taxes, so these 15, 20, 25% increases will never happen again. That will never happen again.
Well, and that's good information to hear on that, because I think a lot of people need to know that. Because I would also ask, is this information available on the website for the county?
It is. It is, and we can get you anything that you need. It should all be on the website, but, you know, sometimes that stuff is a little difficult to find. If you want anything specifically, we'll get it to you directly.
Okay. Well, that sounds great. Appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Mr. West. All right. That's all that I have on my list. If there's anyone in the room that did not sign up but would like to speak, please, you can come forward now.
Yeah, it's not really to speak, but I just have a couple of questions.
Before you start, I'm sorry, can I have your name?
My name's Mike Papa, P-A-P-A.
Mike Papa. All right. Please go ahead, sir.
Yeah. On 717, I think you mentioned in your speech that it was, it goes into effect January 1, and it's good for one year?
No, till 10 years.
10 years.
10 years, till 2035. Yes, sir.
Okay. So there's not going to be a reassessment of the 4%?
No. That 4% cap will remain in place till 2035, at which time we can extend it further on, adjust it. But at that point, you know, we'll be staying back down. Yeah.
It's fixed for 10.
Yep.
Okay. The other thing is, there was a comparison sheet that you put up there that showed the CPI year-to-year.
Yes, sir.
I think you said...
Yep.
Yeah, this one here.
Yep.
And one of the comments you made was, you weren't even sure which CPI index they were going to use, whether it was going to be a state or going to be a national.
Right.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Okay. It surprises me that we don't know what CPI they're going to use. You'd think that that would be published. But I think for purposes of comparison here, you should also do a CPI comparison with the national CPI.
And Mr. Hamill, can you respond to that? Is this a national or the state CPI?
No. So the consultant that I talked to that initially put together some numbers said that they had a hard time going out to find a CPI particular to the state of Georgia. They did look at CPI numbers that came out of the federal government that were CPI numbers for the nation as a whole. But then again, every state's different, every direction. So what they did was, they went out and looked, and they tried to find CPI numbers that were either distinct to Georgia or distinct to the southeast, and they found these numbers that you're looking at right here. The problem is, the way the bill's written, it gives the Department of Revenue latitude to use a CPI number, but it does not distinguish the source or where the CPI number comes from or when the CPI number is published. So they could come and say, hey, last year's CPI number was X. We're going to use that. Or they can come out and say, the monthly CPI number we just got is X. They can use that. We don't know where they're going to get the CPI number, and we don't know what the source is.
Okay, fair enough. But I just think it would be also fair to drop another column in here and say, okay, this is how we got the current CPI column, this is where it's from, and here's the, you know, national number that came out in case that is used. And to another comparison, it may or may not change, you know, what the positive or what the negative financial variation is on that.
Yep. Definitely something we can look into and see if we can make that happen. Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the last, it's just a comment, is again, on this, I can't see it, the CPI column. One of the comments you made is, hey, you know, it's difficult for us to forecast not knowing what the CPI was. And you said, you know, can you imagine having to do that, you know, for your own family? Well, that's what we have to do as family, because we don't know what the CPI numbers are. And we don't have a year ahead of us CPI numbers to do our family budgets, our personal budgets. So that's not, that's not a fair answer.
Well, this will help with those, even in your own taxes, because your home values may go up 24% again, depending on what the tax assessor does. But when it comes time to knowing what your school taxes are, you'll be able to factor that in. No, it's never going to be higher on the school side than a 4% increase.
And one thing to consider, because I've seen that comment has been made online, and when I first read it, I admit, I was like, well, that's a good point. CPI is published monthly, yearly, it's published periodically. The issue with this type of calculation is that it's based on a fixed base year, and every year, it's a calculation that compounds upon itself. So the CPI added to the compounding nature of the floating homestead calculation provides a huge amount of unpredictability. It's almost like a logarithmic function to figure out how this thing compounds upon itself when the variable of CPI is unknown. Right? So it's not that straightforward. I get the, I do agree with the argument that this information is out there, and that's something that we're going to consider, and it's a point that's well taken.
Okay. All right, that was it.
Thank you.
All right.
Just ask a clarifying question.
Sure. Please.
Thank you. So the 4% cap, let's understand that for a moment. That's on the assessed value in terms of the calculation of taxes. That is not necessarily a 4% cap on the millage rate, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So therefore, promulgating a 4% cap in 717, right, or excuse, yeah, 717, versus, and I'll concede for the moment, an unknown on 581, right, that there's some benefit for the opt-out on that conversation. However, but because there's no cap on millage rate at 4%, that really can be, you're only calculating the millage against 4% of the assessed value, right? That millage rate could be 1 or 35.
So the combined millage rate by law can exceed 20? So that's the cap?
Understand that, but I'm just, it's math, right? Either way, it's, the math is, is that we're talking about a cap on the assessed value, not to exceed 4%, not a cap on the millage rate, nor on the other side of the conversation, as I brought up earlier, which we'll deal with, with, you know, the county and the council there separately on dealing with the assessor, on how they, what the maximum cap could be or not be. So that was my clarification.
The millage rate is set by the governing body, all governing bodies?
Understood.
And what we want to be, and I'm just being perfectly transparent, we want to be in a position where, and I'll take the luxury of speaking for my colleagues, we want to be in a position where we can lower your millage rate every year. We don't want to be in a situation where we can't lower your millage rate, or we have to raise it, because we get hit with a year where CPI is half a percent, and now we have to raise millage rates. We don't want to be in that situation. We want to do what we've done the last three years and return all excess revenue to the taxpayer.
Yeah. I mean, and candidly, with the CPI rates, exponentially, it's been exacerbated over the last three years, primarily because of COVID and some inflationary costs that others in the administration, we'll just leave that where that is. But when you take a look at CPI, the next big wave of CPI was back in late '70s, '74 to '78, '79. It may have gone in '81, but not as great. It started to ameliorate itself at that point. But then going back, it was basically back in the early '30s as a consequence of the Great Depression. So just factor that in as this kind of an observation and the millage rate. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edstrom. All right, last call. If anyone would like to speak or ask some questions or anything? No? All right. Hearing, no interest from the public to proceed with the hearing. We'll go ahead and seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
We can't leave without a second, guys. All right. Motion by Mrs. Hoy, second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone. The hearing is now adjourned. We'll be here if you guys want to chat or whatever. I appreciate you guys coming out. Have a good night.